Board of Education meeting, regular meeting of August 1st, 2019. In our first order of business, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody. Sorry for the delay. The first order of business is I need a motion for special resolution.
Salute.
Okay. Let me read the special resolution. Whereas Diana Swinburne has served with distinction as a board member of the Garrison Union Free School District since 2005, serving as vice president of Board of Education from July 2012 through June 2016, and whereas in recognition of the fact that Diana Swinburne is the longest-serving Garrison School Board Member in recent history, and in recognition of her many years of dedicated service to the students, staff, and the community of the Garrison Union Free School District, the Board of Education wishes to express its appreciation for her tireless efforts and countless hours of devoted service to ensure that our Garrison School is a safe, nurturing, and stimulating learning environment for all Garrison students. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the Garrison Union Free School District publicly honors and thanks Diana Swinburne and wishes her the very best in all future endeavors. All in favor? Nays, abstentions, and it passes. We regret Diana's resignation, I guess I could say for the board, but we are impressed by the length of service and we wish her the very best. It has been a phenomenal stretch of years that Diana has served in the Garrison School community, and she always had the best interest of the school at heart, and that would be, she would be giving every meeting trying to remind us that the first thing she was involved in is the children, and I think she was very articulate at that. So, we thank her for her service. Sedway, do you want to say anything special?
It's just been an honor working with Diana, and like you said, she always reminds us that it's all about the children, it's what we do, our focus, and thank you from the heart and from the district and from the school and everybody in it.
Okay, you're up.
Okay, superintendent's remarks. Hello Garrison, welcome, nice to see you all. Hope you're just trying to stay a little cool in this hot, hazy, sweltering weather. Thank you for coming out here this evening. We had our first PISA Capital Project presentation for the community to inform and encourage folks to come out and vote on September 24th. First presentation had six folks, we were very happy that they came, they had really good questions, ex-board members, past board members, community members, parents, so it was a nice diverse group with good questions. And the questions we jotted down and will keep a running list of those questions and responses on our website, so that if you have, if you've got the same questions, you know we're there. But we also have other community presentations planned, hopefully you've got your postcard in the mail with the list of community copies and community presentations. We will also be sending out an e-newsletter to our parent community, we intend to get it out today, but tomorrow is the day, and that will also break down the PISA project. And just reminding you, the PISA Capital Project is for preservation, innovation, safety, and security, and accessibility. Also, the mail folks got saved the date, just reminding that September 24th is super important to us all, and we have these posters around town, Free Food, Post Office, Metro North, just to keep us on your mind.
Food Town, right?
Food Town, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you let out your beak in us.
Sorry. Then we'll also have a four-page newsletter that we'll be sending out to the community by mail, and we'll have some banners and all of that, so just to sort of keep you informed, keep you excited, and have you come through our doors on September 24th to vote. Moving into hiring, you will see on the agenda that we have identified some stellar candidates to fill our positions. We have a new, we're seeking approval of our new music teacher and teacher aides, which you'll find later on the agenda. And we continue to work on filling our long-term middle school now position. We had identified a number of promising candidates, but as we all know from past experience and just listening and speaking to other districts, they prefer full-time positions, so those that we identified accepted full-time positions in other districts. We have, we had an interview and we'll have a demo this week for our promising candidates, so we'll keep you updated on that. The playground across the street, many people have asked me about that playground. For the last few years, it's had yellow tape around it because it's been unsafe and not welcoming to children. So, now that the rains have subsided, from last year it was raining, rain, sports were canceled, we couldn't get heavy machinery in there, we are having a little bit of rain now, but the grounds are not saturated enough for heavy machinery to go into there. So next, tomorrow Paul Hamus will be going in there and cleaning out the railroad ties and mulch, and the new mulch will be arriving before school, so we intend to have the playground open and running for our students when they arrive.
This is the middle school, well, does he feel?
Yeah, it's, both our community, I know that the families around there really are, want to use it.
Yeah.
So, that's good news. And just lastly, I just want to thank all of the people who've been working the summer hours, they're sort of behind the scenes, closing the books of 2018 and 19 while at the same time opening the books for 2019, 2020. So, shout out to Michael Torri and his team, the transportation routes are in place and ready to go, and the building is sparkling, I don't know if you noticed the floors and the windows and the classrooms and all of that, so they are ahead of schedule and doing other projects as well that they didn't intend to do but are able to do because they were so efficient for their, their work and their time. I'm going to thank Beth and Sue and her team for successfully closing those books, 18, 19, and opening them in 19, 20. It's going to be another busy year, and it's going to make you more busy, busier, because you're working on a boat, with the machines and coordination and time and all that, so it's an added, added work to the team. I'm glad they do it, but I just want to make sure that we're mindful of not only they're doing the regular busy roles responsibilities, but we're adding more to their, doing it with, with SWAT. Thank you. And then thank you to Alex and all of the staff who helped with room changes, scheduling roster development, uploading data into e-school data, providing tours for our new arrivals, teaching and coordinating Summer Academy, participating in the hiring process, and that's just the tip of the iceberg of the work that was happening during, during the summer. So, it is an all-hands-on-deck here, and people do it willingly and gladly because they, they love this place so much, and they want the best of our kids, and everybody, hopefully the staff and community, so thank you. It takes a community to, to create something that's as special as this district, so it's all hell.
Okay. Any questions for Laura about her, as they pertain to her remarks? You stole some of my thunder, so I just wanted to say that, you know, there is no summer break in a school district, you know? There may not be teachers in the building all the time, but there's certainly people working feverishly around the clock. It's, everything that doesn't get done during the 10-month schedule is put on for the two-month schedule of the summer, and that's true with nearly everything. And compounded this year with the PISA project, it's not lost, I hope it's not lost on the board, that it is, putting on a vote is a lot of time, time consumption, it's a lot of detail work, and we thank Sue and Beth and everybody who's involved in that work for making it happen, especially this particular time around, it's a busy year, a busy summer, but try to enjoy the next couple of weeks. All right, principal's remarks, Alex?
Good evening everyone. Just wanted to echo some of Laura's remarks of just first and foremost, welcome and congratulations to some of our new staff, it's a pleasure and I look forward to working with and in partnership with all of you. So, I did want to also thank some of our parents and community members that take some time, I set aside some hours every Tuesday in the mornings from 9:00 to 12:00, so I had a great opportunity to have some nice conversations throughout the summer, so that's something I do plan to do outside of the school day during the course of the year, just to make sure that my door is open and available and we can have time for those conversations. Back on August 6th, so way back two weeks ago, we had our kindergarten day in place, so we had, I believe, 11 of our new students as well as their parents come in, so Mrs. Ricky was kind enough to come in and read a story with the kids, Mrs. Green and Ms. Van Decker came in and were outside on the playground as well as in the classroom, and of course, Mr. Torri took them on there for many of them their very first bus ride, so we tried to check off a lot of the first-day anxieties during that day, and many of the families stayed, and it was a nice opportunity for our, not only our kids to meet one another, but also just for our families to come together too. So, I appreciate all those staff who came in and gave their time during that time as well. Summer Academy has been, is halfway through for this week, so our kids are coming in smiling and leaving smiling. I do appreciate Mr. Caliendo, Ms. Penner, and Mr. Ello have been a tremendous help this week, truly appreciate their time. Just as a reminder for any of, whether it's school supplies, whether it's for our summer reading, whether it's the Cooper Corner, everything, as well as for our PISA Capital Projects and the vote on September 24th, all of that can be found on our website, and I have an extensive list of dates which I'll go through a few, however we did, hot off the press courtesy of Mrs. Ricky, so again, thank you to her, she worked tirelessly all summer through multiple drafts, it's wonderful, so first day of school, we should be sending these home with the kids, and we have extras in case service place because this is really what all of us turn to for those really essential dates. But in the most immediate future, this Monday, the 26th after 12:00 p.m., the parent portal will be open, schedules will be posted and available, also just information regarding school dismissal manager. Thursday, the 29th, while we have staff in on their second professional learning day, we also have an opportunity for our sixth graders to come in, get their locker set up, have some pizza, see one another once again, which will be nice, myself and Mr. Diiego, thank you to her. And Tuesday, September 3rd, of course, the first day of school, also would like to say thank you to PTA and GSET will be partnering in having what is now, or has been, an annual breakfast for our new parents and new families, so that is very kind of them to offer that to them. And September 5th and 10th will be our elementary and middle school open houses respectively at 7:00 p.m., so we invite all of you to of course come and meet the teachers for the coming year, September 16th Picture Day, and then of course the 24th. On the 24th as well, in addition to the vote, Nurse Melissa somehow managed to, in very little time, have another blood drive that she has organized within a matter of days, so we are hoping that we had quite a great turnout, I believe more than 40 individuals came out last time, so please do the time, we encourage you to come out, and that's all.
Any questions for Alex? Just one, Alex, we have a, we have a, what's the enrollment for the kindergarten? Do you have any sense of that?
So, we have, so overall we have in the school 208, and we have about 10 of those in addition to are pending. For our kindergarten, we have, I believe we are officially at 16, but we have approximately, let's say three or four that are pending and likely to be in addition to, so we should likely be at about 20.
Okay, and that, okay, so that's like paper.
So, many, as Laura mentioned, many new family tours, and some families even touring for fall 2020, so well-prepared in advance, so.
Terrific, thank you so much, Alex.
Thank you.
And thanks again for all the summer work and happy birthday, by the way, throw that out.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, financial reports, Susan?
First we have the June 2019 report, the first report is the multi-plan account. We started out the month with $1,168,334.99, and we ended the month at $1,215,972.78. Most of that was about $3,000, $3 million in inter-fund transfer, and the checks going out for June are balloon check payments for payrolls, one of our busiest months, and the bond payment goes out in June. And then the investment account, we started out at $6,542,708.88, and ended at $4,397,134.39, and again, you see that $2.15 million were, was transferred to the multi-plan to make the bond payment and do the balloon check payment, so it's probably out at the end of June. July and August usually get done in September because we're still closing the books for June with the auditors, so you can expect those in a business meeting in September.
Anything out of the ordinary?
No, just the bond payments and the balloon checks, you know, and then big tuition payments, usually it's like, June's usually a very busy month in the business office, a lot of payments.
So that's tuition for the previous year, previous, okay, closing the books as they say.
Yeah.
Okay, so you need a motion on this, right?
Yes.
Jill, you want to make a motion? To accept the treasury report?
I move to accept the treasury report.
I'll say it.
Okay, be it resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District, accepting the treasury report for June 2019 as presented, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? And it's accepted. Have to vote on that, right? Just want to leave a vote on it. Okay, terrific. Budget status, revenue status, warrant reports.
Yep, the budget status and the revenue status and the warrant reports are all for the current year, not much activity there, it's real business as usual for July and very beginning of August, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Now I can go directly to the budget transfers that are there.
Go for it.
Okay, I'm not sure which one is which, let me see, which one do you have there? Number one is, oh.
Just for the, just for the purposes of clarity for the public, this time of year, just July, August, everything is switching over from last year's budgetary, completing last year's budgetary cycle and starting a new one, so it's just, the movement is about to occur, okay? Things will get busy and we'll see. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're closing the books, it's busy in the business office, but, but not a lot of, not a lot of payments and stuff going on.
Not a lot of action on money right now, just wait though.
Yeah, just wait. So, what you have is budget transfer number one, is budget number, transfer number one for this current year, and that's just when I, when I put the budget in for the current year, I mean, some things just had to be adjusted when I'm looking and anticipating what our payments will be for the year. So, what we budgeted for back in, you know, May for the May vote, and when I actually put them in, and I'm kind of calculating where we're going to be going forward, that's what all this is. So, basically I just want to move by $21,300 for that. And then for the second budget transfer, that's actually for last year, is the June 30th, and this was after I made journal entries that the auditors had me make, it's just really to make sure that we have no negative balances closing out the books.
Got it.
And those have to be approved.
Okay, great, and they're all coming, got it, I see.
Yeah.
All right, Jill, you want to make a motion?
I move to be approved. Budget transfers and the budget statements for revenue statements and warrant reports.
I'll say it.
Terrific, be it resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves the 2018-19 budget transfer number nine, the amount of $13,120, and 2019-20 budget transfer number one, in the amount of $21,300. So, if I, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, it passes, and it's accepted. One little clarifying question, if the end of the, the final budget transfer is number nine, is that to say that there are nine transfers over the course of the year?
From last year, yeah.
That's, that seems very small. In other words, it seems like we haven't had.
Very accurate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that you're saying, this is correct. If you're not transferring money, it means that you predicted correctly, right? This is, this is my way of saying, good job, Sue. My awkward way of saying, it seemed like that's, I, I think if I was in the budget office of this institution, I'd be transferring money left and right like every other day because I wouldn't have it together. So, I mean, I just think that over the course of 12 months, to make nine transfers means that you have really controlled the expenditures and the revenue, understood the revenue and where it was coming from and how it was coming, and controlled the budget effectively, so I think that's real, a mark of, of eyeing. Yeah, okay. All right, terrific, consent agenda, all right, we're not going to read all of these, okay folks? Need a motion to accept the consent agenda, A through V.
B through V.
B, thank you, E through V. You want to make a motion there?
Sure, we don't have to read them?
No, we're not, we don't have to read these, you don't have to read them.
You can make reference to them.
Yeah.
Our grant agenda.
Hi. Make a motion then.
I move to approve a consent agenda, items B through V, second.
Okay, be it resolved, is there any questions on items A through V? That's what we should do first, right? Items A through V, any questions on items A through V?
No.
Very good.
Music teacher.
Yeah.
Teacher aides who are here.
Yes, Paul Conras and Jill, and Beth is not able to make it, but they are new additions to the Garrison family, and we're thrilled that you're here with us. It was a, it's a long thorough process, and you made it through all two to three phases, so congratulations that you belong here, and we're here, we're all here to support you, and we want you to be successful too. Welcome, welcome. Are there any other things?
Any other, any other questions on items A through V, any other notes that we want to make before we accept the consent agenda?
So, I just want to say Jill is going to be bus monitor and teacher aide, and then Kathy Clark is bus monitor manager, bus monitor teacher aide, and she's going to be full-time teacher aide in-house. So, you'll see some wonkiness here that we have to chair resign from, because it's all civil service process, from bus monitor to teacher aide, now she's full teacher aide handy.
Very nice.
And those students out of district. See that we have the election workers on here as well, we should thank them for volunteering their, getting to do it.
Getting paid too, yeah.
They're spending their time to help us with the election, and that's no easy task to coordinate, it takes lots of communication and coordination that have, lead, and there's still TV here.
There's a TV, yeah.
One TV, yeah. So that's pretty good.
All right, so what we're doing now here is there's a list of consent items here, we could sit here and read them off, but it would work, nearly everybody that's here is, and the board is pretty much familiar with the consent agenda, what we're trying to do is limit the amount of time that we're spending on business and more time on substantive matters, so, but we wanted to point out that, you know, approving a new teacher, approving a new aide is not, you know, trivial business, and so we appreciate the efforts of, well, the search committees, we appreciate the efforts of the hiring, through the, through the hiring process, and we welcome everybody onto the stage, as it were. Okay? And we have a contract here, anybody have any questions about the Bose's contract? That'd be good.
I've got all my questions answered.
All right, true.
Can I add though, if you want to know more, these are all services that Bose offers, and they're also willing to come here and speak to the services that they provide. They always want to come here, they always want to inform, and I want to make sure that the board as well, know what they're offering and the funding decisions that you're making contract wise, thank you.
The subtext of the conversation is that the public should be aware that the, we have an extensive relationship with Bose's, in the sense that they provide many, many services that we don't provide in-house for ourselves, so it assists us, facilitates our ability to get the job done within the house and still maintain a, a, a strong financial footing. So, we, you know, we're, we have a big contract meeting, a contract that has many different kinds of services, and every year we have to go through and approve it, and there's always questions, are we overpaying for this, are we overpaying for that, so it's part of due diligence, we have to look over that contract every year, okay? So that's sort of part of the subcontract. Anybody else have any, any other concerns here? CPI's at 1.5%. It's minimal gas prices, is that the deal for transportation?
No, the, I want to say the state sets the CPI in May for transportation costs to roll the contract. Otherwise we would have to go out to bid, and if we went out to bid, it might increase our costs quite tremendously, so.
Terrific. Any other questions? All right, excellent, excellent. Okay, so, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? And abstentions, the ayes have it, and it is accepted. Thank you so much. It's a long one, good. Okay, I'm going to turn, in the, in the effort to make things more democratic process, I'm going to turn the meeting over to, I hope no one rejects, but I'm going to turn the meeting over to Sarah Torry, who is the chairperson of the policy committee for the next session.
So the next part is the?
I for warrant her, but that was, you know, you're happy. She shouldn't seem so shocked.
Other discussion items, the first reading of new district policies, first one is 7511 draft policy. That, as part of the first reading, do we need to read the full policy, or? It's a bit, okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you, this is my first time.
Consider the meeting is, is the reading.
Is the reading, thank you. Immunization of students and 7552 student gender identity. These items are up for discussion per our policy and how we adopt them, we will have a second meeting, and then we're, they vote at that time, the next meeting to adopt them as they seem fit. Does anyone have any questions?
Can you give the little background about why we need to adopt, I mean, is the, why to adopt an immunization policy?
So, this was brought to the policy committee through Erie One Bose's, which is a service that Laura set up for us to use, to bring us to our attention when the law changes and we need to adjust our policy to match state law, because all of our policies should agree with the law. And the law has recently changed to remove the religious exemption for students, so they have to receive the first dose of all the mandatory vaccines by the first day of school and have a schedule in place to receive the second, correct me if I'm wrong. And if they don't, then they have 14 days in which to, and there is a financial penalty to the school should we have students who have not complied. And we have to make a report as stated in the policy to the state. So, we are updating our policy to reflect, to make sure that it's in line with the law. Any other questions?
I don't have any, but the immunization, so I have one question, I believe the policy answers it, but I thought it'd be good for the public to hear it, and that is, we used to have a, there used to be a religious exemption in state, there's been a crisis, the measles outbreak, state responded by saying there will be no religious exemption for immunizations of all children of school, attending a school in the state, private, public, parochial, whatever variety of school you have must be immunized. The only exemption that would be homeschooling, I believe you're correct, if you're homeschooled, you kind of have to be immunized, but, so, this is a statewide thing, this is simply the district adopting a policy to line itself with state law, okay? And so, but there is a medical exemption, and people should be aware.
There is still a medical exemption, but that does, and they have recently again changed the law, that you do have to go to a doctor, and the doctor has to provide proof of why they need the medical exemption, is my understanding, but those, yes, those are still allowed.
For, the hypothetical, you could be allergic to the vaccine for a particular?
It would be on a case-by-case basis, it's first on the, the doctor.
One could be, right, exactly. All right, terrific. Um, so, uh, any other questions? Any questions about immunization? Do you have any question about immunization? Well, good. Keep reading the district board. Excellent. All right. Anything else? What else have we had?
The next one is the, uh, student gender identity. This is, uh, the policy committee is going through a process at the moment to update, um, basically the entire policy binder. We are a little bit out of date. Many of our policies date to '01, although, uh, the board and particularly Beth and Laura have done a good job of making sure that when the law changes, the policies are updated. But, um, there are some areas where we perhaps need a policy and gender identity is one of them, where we can move the school forward and meet the needs of all students by adopting, um, a policy like this.
And what does this policy sort of say or do? And, and in essence is, uh, what is the interest of the policy?
Laura, do you want to speak to that?
I think maybe just the first two sentences. It's also, it's just another layer to ensure that we're providing safe and supportive educational environments to progress academically and developmentally for all of our children. Um, the districts are committed to fostering a safe learning environment for all students free from discrimination and harassment on the basis of sex, gender, gender identity, gender nonconformity, and gender expression.
And it does, it allows to address restroom lockers. They're allowed transgender or, um, gender nonconforming students to use the restroom or locker in that corresponds to their expressed gender identity. It addresses physical education, sports, uh, activities. The dress code, uh, may not discriminate against them. We will not restrict the students' clothing based on their gender.
Right. So, and this is, uh, this lays out for the community, uh, the language necessary to, uh, honor these particular, this particular policy. It also, at the end of every policy, there's usually a, a place where it refers to law and refers to the laws that is impacted by this policy or this policy is attempting to, um, work with or to enact in some way, to localize. So these are, this is what this particular policy does. It looks out for the interests of, uh, of our children.
And this one does refer to...
Journeying with their gender.
Yes. This one refers to, for which is the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. It is also important to point out that we did craft the language, as with all our policies, it did come from Erie One Bose's, which provides a service to all schools to ensure that the policies, the language aligns with the law and, uh, with what other schools are doing as well.
Yeah. Well done.
Any questions?
Just one, one comment and that is, uh, the, it says, this is really nippy, I'm sorry. No. It's, it's, I think it's a four-page document. It says one of three on the right. So, um, in the top right, that's super nippy, but, uh, just didn't want a page to get lost.
Lost.
Yeah. Okay. And, uh, this would be an excellent way to use the first person there pronoun. You know, in the text, the, the text that we have uses his or her all the time. You might want to use the their pronoun. Just to align it smooth with the language. Because you may not be someone identifying as a his or her, so.
We can absolutely look at that.
So, yeah, there's a, there's a couple of references where you're using pronoun his or her, where you can use their. It would make better sense in the text. Anyway. Okay. Terrific. This is the first reading. We're not acting upon these. Any, does any items, anybody want to say anything about these particular, uh, policies?
No, just a quick, I bet we do the second reading at the next meeting and we adopt that.
You may adopt the next reading or you may adopt the subsequent. Thank you. You may adopt the same, same reading as the second.
Second.
Second reading. Same reading as the second.
And, um, if Beth and Sarah can keep, make sure that we're all like on top of it, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Do you want to, as chair of the policy, do you want to lay out maybe some of the goals that your poll, that the policy committee is trying to achieve this year?
Certainly.
That you identify?
The policy committee is looking to revise this binder here, which is, lives with Laura's office. Our goal for this year of this binder is done in sections. So they're all divided up by laws, internal operations, personnel, students. We have a goal of updating the entire thing and submitting a draft to Erie One Bose's. They will then go through the process of looking at our revision, making sure the law hasn't changed since we started this process again. And, and making sure we didn't mess it up, basically is my understanding. And then send it back to us for a second reading. So our goal is to get the first draft Erie One Bose's done A. We are going to approach this. We have talked about initially about doing, um, section by section, going in order, doing like one, depending on, some of these are longer than others. So example, students and personnel, we're going to take a month or two to go through it because there's a lot of policies there to be updated and changed. For bylaws and internal operations, we plan to do those in September. So we're going to do section by section. We will look possibly to do, um, the required policies first. And we have a listing of those provided to us. There are, I believe, correct, around 44 required policies by the state that we must have on the books. The rest are, are not necessarily required, but have proven to be useful to other districts or recommended. And there are some that maybe we have currently that Erie One Bose's recommends removing that we do not need. So that is our plan, is to get this first draft done. And then beyond that, we can start looking at, maybe getting it posted online. But this is the first step to getting it revised. And then back to the next board. But I, I think, um, we reviewed it, 40 is in our committee meeting. I think it's doable. We've got a good, we've got a good plan. We have a good plan, as long as we're doing five monthly, we're doing two meetings a month, um, to really go through those. As long as we've all done our homework ahead of time and read through these, they're really exciting, we enjoy them. I think we'll be prepared and we can move through this quickly. And some of them, there isn't a lot to change. Some of them are pretty much the same as, um, they had been set forth. And others, there is a lot to change in the draft that we can talk about, so. I do anticipate that some sections will clearly go faster than others. But initially, we had talked about doing it section by section and bringing it to the board, but that's not the recommendation. It's to do it all at once so that every policy, once the full board finally approves or revies draft, it is all adopted on the same date and they all have the same date on them.
There may be policies of, of, that are more urgent than others that we have to address isolately, but...
Yes.
The, uh, the whole manual in itself will be done later.
And some of those things may change as we work through it. It's a living document. We change it as we need. Even if we make a change now, when we see down the road we need further changes, we can do that. So this is, as you pointed out, set in stone, so.
Right. So, uh, and, you know, this, this is, I want to commend the policy committee for the work they've already done this summer. What, what I hope is that we can have, uh, ability to report out in a kind of efficient manner what the committee's been up to and, and, you know, when it's appropriate. So, um, because the committee work is, this year will be a little bit more extensive than previous years, I imagine. So, uh, we have, just so the public knows, we have four committees right now. Board committees, finance, audit, facilities, planning and policy. So, uh, we may add another committee. Uh, then we have several school committees, which have to deal with building committees. And that's curriculum, athletics, environment, safety and health wellness, and tech. These are all opportunities for people to serve. So I, I welcome people to serve on committees without, if, if they are eligible and more importantly, if they show real interest, especially in the school committees. Okay? That's about it. So the goal is to make sure that our policies are up to date and aligning with law.
Yes.
And doing good work.
And working in the best interest of our students.
And our objective is to make sure that the binder is, isn't, isn't, is as clean as possible, I guess.
Yes. And grab, present what was coming to you. And Laura, correct me, this lives in your office and anyone can read it and review it at any time, right?
More than over time.
We have copies, but it's not, uh, available to everybody.
Right.
Absolutely.
It's a bear. Excellent. Okay, great. It's a bear. All right, terrific. And, uh, okay, Board of Education charges often audit and finance committee. All right, what am I looking at here, Beth? We are discussing, what am I looking at here?
We're discussing the status of the board committee charges.
Right.
And you need to, um...
We need people to be on the finance.
...select that audit, audit and finance committee.
Because we have one person on it right now, correct?
Yeah.
Jill is on it or no?
We're rotating.
You are rotating, that's not good. Is that the deal? I'll do it. Just put me on it. Okay?
We need more than one.
And...
Part of committee is three board members or so.
We need three board members for that one? Okay. Sarah's terrific.
Excuse me, I would love to be on finance.
There we go.
Part of finance is two different things, I think, so.
Oh.
Order has to have three board members.
I would love to be on audit.
I'll be on audit. And then, uh, only we're down a couple of people, that's the problem.
You can put in what you think.
So Courtney will be on the audit committee as well. Does that sound good? Courtney, myself, and Sarah until further notice. Is that plausible? Beth, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, terrific. And then finance committee? Are we okay with that?
Yeah, with the charge.
All right.
Okay, audit is a one that's required by law.
Yeah.
Finance is an optional one, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, terrific. Because I'm on that one, I think.
On the charge.
Sarah and I are rotating. I think that's correct. All right.
I can speak to the policy committee charge. We are currently in the process of revising it. We discussed it our last meeting at the time. I saw the changes to the document, but we should have one, a full charge presented for the next meeting.
I, I would like, with permission of the board, I think we might be good to, and this is, I guess, an opportune time to raise it, is to investigate a personnel committee that will serve the board. And it was recommended by Bose's superintendent that we, um, might look into this as a way of making sure that we're, um, the personnel committee can serve in many ways. But one of the things we could do is help define whether we have the positions we need, how are these positions laid out, making sure job descriptions are aligned correctly, make sure the best hiring practices are being used. It's not really a hiring committee. It's a committee that oversees how personnel are being oriented, how personnel are, are, how jobs are being laid out and job descriptions are being laid out. And, uh, it was recommended by the superintendent, the Bose's superintendent, that we might benefit from that because it would be greater transparency between a higher committee practice and what the board understands about the hiring practices and things like that. We don't need to make a decision on it, but I thought we might, uh, I might lay that out there as a discussion in the near future. And I thought I would bring it up, sort of do business, but, uh, I'm not sure what it would look like. I would think we would want to do something that fits the history and traditions within, within the school. But, uh, I think it might help with communicating how, um, the kinds of roles and responsibilities that each position has when we go to create them and how that helps, uh, the board understand what's going on within the building or what's going on within the process of hiring. So it's something I think we might want to investigate. So I'm asking if, uh, or maybe I'm expressing a hope that the board would like you to think on it, whether it's something worthy of investigating or is it a waste of time? So. Okay? Simply because the superintendent, the Bose's brought it up as a, as a recommendation, that we take a look at it. So, okay?
Maybe we could take a look at what, um, other schools have and how they use it.
Yeah. I mean, it...
Doesn't always necessarily compare equally to ours, but, uh, it's a good place to start.
Yeah. I think maybe so. Well, I think Google is good use, good use of Google. Personnel committee, some boards, what do they do? What aren't they supposed to do? And making sure that, you know, that it functioned for a really...
This one might have resources as well, either school or association.
Yeah, this one might have resources. They might, they might have limited resources, but, um, we might look at other states and what other states do. But it's just a question of whether, whether the board would benefit and whether the district would benefit from having more, maybe, uh, more engagement proactive place, relationship to how we go about hiring or how we go about defining roles and responsibilities between jobs. It's a, it's a, what it is, is that this district is a, has a, you have to wear a lot of hats if you're a school, if you're a member of this community. And it's really important for everyone to understand who's wearing whose hats and what, what responsibilities are out there. Sometimes we just don't know, uh, like how many jobs that maybe the district clerk has or the business manager has. There's a lot of different roles and responsibilities that each, that each person has in this, in this school. Sometimes I think the board is a little, isn't quite aware of all the different roles and responsibilities people play. Maybe a personnel committee can help facilitate, uh, greater communication. Just to throw, throw that out there. Planning committee, auditing meeting, student facilities is swamped, I imagine, with, uh, PISA work. And, uh, finance and audit is slated already. Correct? All right. So I think we, we need to...
Finance, we have, I think, you and Sarah and James would like to split that?
Yeah, we're gonna split.
That's where let's take board members.
Okay. And then we're going to make sure that all charges are, uh, we're going to have to go through and make sure all charges are up to date and everything. And what we want to do is populate the website with the members, right? So we have fresh, fresh committee members, fresh charges, and that we know who's on line.
And scheduling.
And the schedule of meetings. So what I, this is, the board's very aware, you know, what the hopes are here is that everybody's serving on a board that leads to productive work. Or, I'm sorry, everyone's serving on a committee that leads to meaningful, productive work. And when you serve on that committee, that you set, you set some goals, you set the schedule, and you try to meet that. And you try to populate each committee with, uh, with individuals in the community, uh, both, or either in the school or in the community, that'll help facilitate the kinds of goals you want to achieve. And so that's the hope. The hope is that the communities build more actively than we have in the past. Okay? All right. Good enough. I think we can close the discussion. Yes? Action items. A, board committee membership. Great. Uh, being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District approves the audit and finance committee membership for 2019-2020.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Excellent. Action item, create teacher aide position. This is where it gets a little off, right? Being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District hereby approves the creation of a full-time teacher aide position.
So moved.
Seconded?
Second. And this is Laura, you spoke to earlier? Excuse me? This is what you spoke to earlier, removing what?
This is an additional.
Additional?
Yeah.
Like an additional.
Four.
Teacher aide.
Okay. All right, terrific. And what, and what, what would they reserve within?
CSC recommendation.
A CSC recommendation. Thank you. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? No? And it passes. Uh, being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District hereby appoints Beth Graham to the position of teacher aide effective August 28, 2019, at a salary based on the school, Garrison School Related Personnel Agreement. Wow. Day to July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2021. If I'm, so that's within that schedule, right? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
So moved.
So moved? Thank you.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a job. Excellent. Be resolved, the Board of Ed, approved tax warrant. Be resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District confirms the tax rule, authorizes the tax levy, approves the tax warrant for the 2019-2020 school year as per the attached. We need it so moved.
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor of the tax warrant? Say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Extensions? The ayes have it. Approve the transportation contract extension with Hudson Valley Bus Company. Being resolved, the Board of Ed, Garrison Union Free School District approves the extension of the 2014-2015 transportation contract with Hudson Valley Bus Company for the 2019-2020 school year using annual CPI as posted on the NICE Ed website for 2019-2020. Contract is calculated as CPI at 1.5%, resulting in an estimated total transportation cost of $361,021.12. So moved?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays? All right. Yeah, thank you so much, Jill. Excellent. And the ayes have it, and Beth. Authorize the disposal of district property. What are we getting rid of?
Dodge caravan.
The Dodge caravan.
You know, go Dodge caravan. No, go Dodge caravan, two thousand, the two thousand caravan.
Wow.
All right, and by disposal, everyone remembers, we don't mean drive it to Foodtown parking lot and leave it, correct? We mean what? Sell it?
We're going to try to sell it and/or just sell it for scrap.
For scrap, okay.
Probably will want to be for scrap.
In this case, disposal does not mean, is, their technical term means to, you know, get rid of, but not just get rid of it, just be...
Doesn't mean abandon.
Doesn't mean abandon, right? Exactly. Okay. All right, being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District authorizes the disposal of a two, of a two thousand Dodge caravan in accordance with the board policy five-two-five-zero, all in...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions, and the ayes passive. Approval of disposal of obsolete computer equipment. Being resolved, the Board of Ed, Garrison Union Free School District approves the disposal miscellaneous obsolete computer equipment, and I'm guessing this is wires, old monitors, blah, blah, blah?
And laptops and computers, it's different.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a combination of a lot of different things. Some of it, some of it, to my understanding, is Voces, years ago, we had a program of Voces, so they were purchasing, so some of their, some of it is their equipment, but we still have to have it disposed of, and then, my understanding from Nancy is that they are going to help us dispose of some of our things that have become obsolete.
They have a retirement thing, right? Terrific.
Yep, so they wipe everything clean, so we don't have to worry about motherboards out there and stuff like that.
Terrific. Authorized, this, okay, so be, did I just? So moved, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? And it's gone. Textbooks, breaks my arm. Being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District authorizes the disposal of obsolete textbooks in accordance with the board policy fifty-two-fifty, to the remainder shelf they go. So moved?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm repeating.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, these would be, I think I saw the list, right?
There are only one copy of most of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of those were books that we buy for our high school students, that have been sitting in the business office for many years, and so I had somebody come in and look at them, and it offered me something, so I was able to get rid of them, and some of them, he said he wouldn't take, so.
All right, terrific. So, we have, excellent. All right, so I think that's it for items, right? Did I vote on that? Did we vote on the textbooks?
I don't think so.
No, yeah, so moved it?
Yes, so moved.
I think we did, I did.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nays? No? And we are done with the business section, only to say if we have, I got up to search for coffee, I missed out on introductions, but we have two new employees here, right? Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah.
All covers.
Well, I went for coffee, and it teleparted, so that's what happens when we talk to, lose my track, and if there's a public comment, the public's here, if they would like to make a comment.
I would just say something. I'll be picking up the tax bills tomorrow, now that you approve the warrants, and they'll be going out sometime next week. The first day that the public can pay would be September third, since September first is on Sunday this year, and then the second is on Friday, so.
We're feeling so good about all this. Okay, good to know.
Just an update.
Good to know.
And welcome, welcome.
Yeah, welcome, welcome, everybody. And I hope there's plenty of opportunities to get to meet and create new members in the community, I'm sure there are, right, a lot of good opportunities, and terrific. Okay, board member comment. Sarah, you got anything to say about Greece?
I do, I'm not going to have to get much.
Yes? Court?
Nope.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Jill? Got anything? No board member comment. Come on, you guys, you got some...
Who has something to say? Nope, moving on.
No, I don't really, I don't really have too much to say, only I'll try and find ways of maybe getting quasi-committee reports into our business without it being laborious and taking up too much time, but just the kind of, the kind of thing Sarah just did is really, I think, give people here, you know, what they're up to, what is this group up to, and, you know, we hear back from you in six months or whatever, but we get a good sense of things when we find out what communities are up to, and I think where, if a lot of work is going to be done there, I think it'd be great for the, for us to be informed, for the board to be informed about the stats of that, or developments, or what's interesting and what's not. Helps me anyway. My only comment is, all hands on deck for the PISA project, it's a big moment in the school's history. The board have voted unanimously to support this being, the bond going out for vote, and I know people come out and vote, demonstrate we live in a democracy still, and the power of vote factors, so I hope that everyone comes out and says what they have to say. And I hope that we've been clear as a community about why we feel that this is a legitimate bond to float, and that this is a legitimate project. I hope we've been clear about that, I hope we will remain clear about that, I hope we understand what the main features and factors in this particular project is, are, and I hope we can articulate that in clear, simple terms, so that everybody understands that after twenty years of not asking for a bond or major renovations to the building, it is a good time to do it, it's a timely, timely, timely bond, and I think we should definitely make use of that. I think it's a great opportunity for us to move forward on a project, if that's what the public wishes, but I think I am very clear in my mind that it was a very good process, it took a few years to come to understand what the needs of the building are, and that this particular timing is appropriate, so I hope that the scope of the project is able to be articulated, I hope the needs are being addressed, and I hope that, I hope that everyone's getting, I know they're being articulated, I just hope that it's, it's being taken seriously in a heartfelt, in a heartfelt manner. It's a big moment for the school's history, so, and a great moment for the community to express the support of the school. Okay? I think I did all that with a legit reflection. Excellent. Okay. All right, we're going to adjourn, the public session, and go to executive session. Being resolved, the Board of Education, Garrison Union Free School District adjourns to the executive session to review applications for the board vacancies. So moved?
Second.
So moved.
Seconded, anybody? Yeah, all, remember, it's training to, or, adjourn to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the ayes have it, we are done for today. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Okay, for coming. Fortunately, we have to retreat right here.